Okay, meeting begins 7:06. We're going to begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would just like to introduce Doug Cauliflower. He's our current President of the Chamber of Commerce. He's going to lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance. Also, stick around later, he's going to be telling us about some wonderful events happening with the Chamber, and especially with the Citizens Business of the Year.
Please get everybody to stand, please. Place your flag. Place your hand over your heart, and after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Doug. And we look forward to hearing from you later. Okay, moving on, item 1.2, roll call. Stepping in this evening will be Councilmember Sutherland for Veronica Jones.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, please listen for your name and answer accordingly. Jeff Simmons. Victoria Knapp. Billy Malone.
Present.
Akaria Zemi is excused. Dorothy Wong.
Here.
Erin Sheeta, excused. Gloria Sanjica. Veronica Jones is counting the homeless tonight. Antonio Becerra.
Here.
Pat Sutherland is here. Nick Santangelo.
Present.
Jennifer Lee is also out counting. She's excused. Reggie Wilkins. Diane Markison.
Here.
And Sylvia Vega.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. Excellent. Okay, moving on to item 1.3, approval of the January 21st meeting agenda. Councilmember Sutherland.
Okay. Hang on a second, I got to change my hat. Okay. No. Okay. Well, I was looking for my cheat sheet, and I don't seem to have brought it with me, so. This is the 21st, my 7 is the 14th. The Executive Committee, the Executive Committee met on January the 14th to set the agenda. Copies are on the piano in the back, so if you have not already done so, please pick up a copy of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections from the Council? In that case, I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention. Councilmember. Okay. Moving on to the Officers' Report, item 2, 2.1, the Chairman's Report. First of all, I'd just like to say that this evening, a Councilmember that used to be on the Council, Judy Matthews, has been, she's not only on the Council, but she's been instrumental in bringing the homeless count year after year to here in Altadena, moving it from Pasadena, I think this is the fourth year in Altadena. So we do our own count. Several members this evening has requested, this is the first time there's been a conflict between the two events, but several Councilmembers, because the Council does support the homeless count, has requested absence to actually partake in the count, and several members here will be going over there and supporting and helping once the meeting is over as well. So I'd like to thank everyone that's partaking in that, and that is why some of the members aren't here this evening. I also want to bring up one other thing, is that I know recently, and a lot of you are here, I heard, concerning the farmer's market, and I want to just point out that one, there is public comments, make sure you have a public comments card handed in on any topic, oh, sorry. I just wanted to bring that up because there's going to be addressed in a CT report at the end, so if you have questions, the Census Track representative will be addressing that in her Census Track report at the end, so if there is one, something issues, please state at the end. Okay, moving on, Officers' Report, 2.2, Vice Chair. Councilmember Sutherland.
Well, let's see if I remember whatever I wrote down on my cheat sheet earlier. As Mr. Malone, Councilmember Malone, said, we do have public comment cards. Public comment is on the agenda tonight, it's item number seven after the community reports. If you would like to make public comment, please fill out one of the cards that are empty cards that are sitting on the piano, and deliver it to one of the Councilmembers at either end of the table. At the appropriate time, then we will call on you each individually, and then if you would please come up to the podium and make your comment to the Council. And I think that is all this evening.
And there was a two-minute limit?
Two-minute limit.
Okay. Moving on, item 2.3, Recording Secretary. Councilmember Sutherland, reporting for Councilmember Jones.
The next hat goes on. The minutes from the December 17th minute were sent out by Councilmember Jones to everybody, and as of, all corrections have been made as of noon today, any corrections that were sent in to Veronica. So are there any additional corrections that have not been made that you would like to mention now? If no, in that case, then I would move to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Some?
May I just make one comment, only because I noticed it greatly this particular time. When you receive the copies of the minutes, Councilmembers, it would really be appreciated if you would read them. I used to say that, too. I know, sorry about that. But I was told that I did send some corrections in, and they were just minor corrections, but there were a couple of things that got left off of the minutes. So it is, I'm not the only one that should be doing this, so it would be very helpful if you would please all be sure that you read the minutes when you get them. Thank you.
I would just like to comment, as usual, for anything, see something, say something. So if any Councilmember sees something that we missed, or went forward, or was admitted after we talked about it, please make sure you say something, and so we can make sure it's addressed and put forward correctly. Okay. Councilmember Sanika is right. Okay, moving on, Treasurer's Report, 2.4. Councilmember Lee is at the homeless count this evening. Councilmember Vega is going to be bringing the can very shortly, and that will be...
We're not bound, so we're going to have to use a beverage cup. Toyota, it's just, this is...
Okay.
We are improvising.
Okay. It's not in the...
Jennifer may have it as well.
Oh, she may have, okay. Okay. Well, if you're inclined to donate to a coffee mug, please do so. That will be handed around, the Council does not get any support or finances or budget from anybody, it is all from donations. So if you feel so inclined, that will be going around. The actual...
We pay to be on it anyway.
Right?
Pay to be on it.
And the actual Treasurer's Report will be presented at next month's meeting. Moving on, item 2.5, Corresponding Secretaries' Report. Councilmember Wong.
Thank you, Chairman. So it's an exciting time, it's 2020, so we're trying to really get events going on here in Altadena. So if you guys want to go on to our altedinatowncouncil.org website, I started adding information about the new voting procedures, and I'll talk about some things later about historic districting. We had some amazing library town halls, and you're going to hear from our community members on some great events coming up. So again, check it out, and one meeting that I will highlight soon will be coming up on January 28th. That's our Acona Meeting, and that stands for the Altadena Coalition of Neighborhood Associations. And so that'll be happening Tuesday, January 28th. That will be covering aging and senior assistance, also school closures, Edison tree trimming, and climate change impacts. So it's definitely a great opportunity to hear from different speakers, and also to ask questions. So it's one of our engaging events that happens every other month, so don't miss Acona on January 28th, 7:00 p.m., here at the Community Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wong. And I will state that Councilmember Wong did sign up for both events this evening, to be here, and the homeless count. So she's anticipating to be running from here afterwards, so, thank you.
Okay. Moving on, Public Safety Reports, item 3, 3.1, California Highway Patrol Officer Cooper.
Welcome back.
He's our motor. Not a motor. Yeah, there's cars for motors, he's not a motor.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone had a good holiday and a good New Year's. I've got the stats here for the month of December. It looks like in December, we had a total of 19 collisions. Of those, we had 16 that were property damage only, we had six that had some form of injury, and then we had three DUI arrests. As far as events upcoming, we've got February 15th will be the Black History Parade on Saturday, so we'll be helping out with the traffic control for that as well, and I'll more than likely be riding in the parade again like I did last year. So we're looking forward to that. And then February 2nd is when our 11 new officers are going to be reporting to the office, so we're going to start the training, the infield training with the 11 new officers for the next few months, to get them ready to go out on their own. So that should be a fun process. 11 is a large number for our office to be coming in, so that's going to help out a lot, once we get them all trained and out on their own, so. And that's all I've got, unless anybody's got any questions for me.
Any questions from the Council? Councilmember Knapp.
I'm not going to be at Charles White Park, though, right?
What's that? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Charles White Park.
I have not heard, the first meeting, actually, to set it up is tomorrow, so I haven't heard as far as I know they're going to start up at Charles White Park, but I don't know if that's changed or not yet.
Can I ask a question regarding that? Once it's mapped, could you send the information over to our Councilman and Secretary, and we can actually post it on our website?
Yeah. Yeah, we can do that.
During the minute?
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, Altadena Sheriff's Station Captain Jacobs. Okay. Okay. They are probably at the homeless count, I just heard, so thanks again for their participation. Moving on, 3.3, Fire, Altadena Fire, Maria Gaykin, thank you.
Hello, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Oh, I'm looking at the agenda, that's not going to give me information about December. Okay, for the month of December, 382 total responses in Altadena. 323 of those were for medical calls, and we transported 239 of those patients. Pretty close with Highway Patrol on their traffic collisions. Did you notice that? Yeah, I've got 20 on mine, but we did have eight fires. Couple of trash fires, a cooking fire, two pole fires. We did have two structure fires, coincidentally enough, both of them on Menorou Drive. On the 26th of December, there was an accidental electrical fire, which was the automatic timer for the Christmas tree lights to come on, it had overheated, and it lit the Christmas tree on fire. So yeah, unfortunate, unfortunate thing that happened there. They were able to confine the fire to just that room, so that was good, but there was smoke damage and water damage throughout the home. And then on December 31st, we had another accidental electrical fire, which was an electrical short in a space heater. So with the weather getting very cold, hopefully it starts, it stays cold, but if you are using space heaters, please just be very careful, turn them off when you leave the room, never go to sleep with a space heater still on, and just make sure that there is nothing right in direct proximity to that space heater that could catch on fire if it comes too close to that. We did have some arcing wires and some power lines down throughout the month, and a couple of gas leaks that caused no damages. And that is the extent of the report, unless there's any questions.
Councilmember Sutherland?
As you mentioned, you know, the number's about the same as Highway Patrol, and I, do you overlap on any of these?
We do. You know, there could be overlap, and then there could be some that they have that we did not respond to, there could be some that we responded to that they did not, for whatever reason. It's, we're never going to see a month where our collisions are the same.
But I ask because it looked like there were a whole lot more than we usually have. I've been doing some checking on some of these.
Yeah, I added quite a few lines from last month. Last month, there were about eight.
Right.
And, but I will also say that last month was on the lower side. Typically, I think you're somewhere in the teens, usually every month. It's somewhere in the teens.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question. Under the item here, it says two hazmat. What is...
Gas leaks. They were the gas leaks.
Just standard gas leak?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hazmat is a very broad, you know, it has a very negative connotation, and people think hazmat, hazardous materials, oh my god, the world's falling apart, but a lot of things can be hazmat, so, yeah.
Thank you. Any more questions from the Council? No? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, Public Safety Report, item 3.4, Map Your Neighborhood, Karen Gibson. Oh, not Karen Gibson.
Are you sure?
Positive.
Hi, I'm Sharon Collins. I'm also with Map Your Neighborhood, and Karen has asked me to give the report tonight for her.
What was your last name again, I'm sorry?
Sharon Collins.
Collins, okay.
So our Map Your Neighborhood Committee has, our Disaster Preparedness Program, has made good progress in that we have now mapped over 15% of Altadena's approximately 15,000 households. So we're getting there. And the goal is to have our neighborhoods more comfortably weather the aftermath of a huge earthquake, which, yes, we've heard it all, but it will one day be here. So one of the best parts of the program continues to be the fact that neighbors comment on the fact that they really have appreciated the opportunity to get to know, to meet some of their neighbors that they didn't know before. And so it's a good project to go into it with the goal of helping one another in the aftermath of a disaster. We do have trainings for hosts for neighborhoods, and this year, there will probably be only three. The first one is coming up Sunday, February 9th, from 4 until 6:00 p.m., at the Altadena Town and Country Club, which I would like to again publicly thank for their wonderful support. They offer a lovely training space for us. Cloth tablecloths, coffee, cookies, you know, can't complain about that. So we have done a little bit of revamping of the training sessions. We've abbreviated them somewhat, we've cut a half an hour off of the length, we figure four to six is a good length of time to do the training. Our focus is still mainly on getting a neighborhood plan set up, but we've also added information about what to do during the earthquake, so while the earthquake's happening, what do you do to stay safe and avoid injury? We have also added information on personal preparedness to get your home and your family prepared personally, so that you can be ready to help neighbors, and so that has become part of the program, too. We always have handed out information, but we now do a little more training on it. So with that, if there are any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Councilmember Wong?
I'm sorry, did I miss when the next training is?
It's February 9th, Altadena Town and Country Club, from 4 to 6, and that is a Sunday. They're always on Sundays. Okay?
When it comes to somebody being a host, can anyone host, or any location host, or how would one go about that in their area?
Generally speaking, what the training does is offer an opportunity to our residents to decide to host for their neighborhood. They define the boundaries as to what is their neighborhood, generally it's 20 to 30 homes, in that range, whatever makes sense for their area. And then the training helps them be prepared to hold a meeting, and what we do as members of the committee is go to their neighborhood meeting to support the host, to kind of moral reinforcements, but also we provide tons of handouts, we help them as far as taking down information from their neighbors as to what supplies they have, or what skills they have that would assist in an emergency. It's, we focus mainly on earthquakes, because that's our biggest problem, but the training is good for any kind of disaster that might strike.
Thank you. I just mentioned, because you mentioned there was three hosts this year, and I just wondered if there was a way to encourage...
Three trainings.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Three trainings.
My apologies.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, Committee Reports, item 4, 4.1, Land Use Committee, Councilmember Markison.
Yes. We did not have a meeting for January. We did not have any items to review or vote on. I did get a couple of questions about, you know, why we cancel and all of that. The Land Use Committee, when we have items that we're working on, is really a super labor-intensive committee to be on, that we do a lot of work, if you've ever come to any of the meetings that we have, where we have complex projects that we're reviewing. That work is ongoing, so if we don't have anything to actually take action on, or have a resident give us a presentation on their new project, I'd rather have people be able to stay home with their families that night for the hour or two, or hour and a half that we meet. So that's why, is, that does not mean that the committee's not working, in fact, we have one that we've been working on for a couple of months now, very actively, and putting a lot of hours into. So anyway, we will be having a meeting in February, and expect to have action items then. So if you want to come see what we do, come, it's the first Tuesday of the month, here at 7:00 p.m. So that's really all I have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for me? No.
Okay. Moving on, item 4.2, Safe Streets Committee, Councilmember Wong.
Thank you very much. So the Safe Streets Committee is a traffic safety and mobility committee by and for Altadena. So if you'd like to get involved in 2020, I have signup sheet back there, or you can reach out. We have a couple of amazing events coming up. One is in partnership with Altadena Heritage, also the Office of Traffic Safety, Berkeley Safe Truck, and it's called Street Story 101. And the event will happen on February 20th at 7:00 p.m. And what you're going to do is bring your laptop, your tablet, your smartphone, and you're going to be able to document places within Altadena that you feel potentially unsafe, where you might see an accident happening. You know, everyone types it in, but how do we actually document this? So this will become data for LA County Public Works, and all of the work that we're doing to really look at our streets, how we walk, and so I hope you get involved in 2020. So that will be on February 20th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m., and it'll be, I think, here at, here at the Community Center. And then the other thing happening, on February 19th, we are going to be doing a bicycling assessment of Jackson Elementary as part of, again, California Office of Traffic Safety. We're creating a report for safe routes to schools. We did a walking assessment, and then this will be completing it with a bicycling assessment, and the bicycling assessment will be not just around the school, but how do you get to school? How do you get to the next school? How do you get to the library? How do you get to JPL? So we really want community members that feel somewhat comfortable on your bike, but we will have folks that are certified instructors, including myself, and we will be assessing routes that sort of surround Jackson Elementary. So, and it's an exciting time, because if we can tackle the assessment around one school, we can hopefully look at all the other schools, and really look at the traffic safety and mobility, how we move around Altadena. So that's on February 19th, and I'll post some information, and if you want to go for a bike ride, it's just a mile or two, and we'll have three or four groups going around, and basically creating community assessments of different conditions. And it was really eye-opening when we did the walking audit, that was including community members, parents, schools, teachers, and a four-way stop sign got put in because one of the community members kept saying, "There should be a four-way stop sign here," and then more and more, and the data is there, and before you know it, we had a four-way stop sign at Casitas and Figueroa. And so these are really powerful assessments, and I know we're going to hear some other great stuff about moving and walking in Altadena. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to item 5, which is Special Presentations. I want to mention that during the special presentations, there is a 10-minute limit on presentations. If you do have someone that wants to request to the Council a 10-minute presentation, and that goes to Councilmembers, just make sure people are aware that there is a 10-minute limit on the presentations, so that we can allow everybody a fair time on that. If you do require more than 10 minutes, it requires a request. Okay? Moving on, that's item 5.1, Tuscan Airman Event, Eugene Hutchins.
Good evening, Altadena Town Council, I'm Eugene Hutchins. Since I last spoke to the Altadena Town Council last September, the planning for the Oliver Goodall Project, as you see near, for Tuskegee Airmen event, has been moving along very nicely, and we are very excited for the day of the event on Sunday, February 16, 2020. The event, again, is going to be at, in West Altadena, on Harriet Street, between Casitas and Tola Avenues, and it's going to be a very exciting event. I wanted to personally extend my gratitude to Town Councilmember Veronica Jones for her support of this project by serving on the committee, but also recognize Town Councilmembers Gloria Sanjica and Dr. Sandra Thomas for their counsel and support of this project. And I would like to also, at this time, extend a personal invitation to the full Town Council to attend this event, and to have also a table presence of the Altadena Town Council, because it's going to be a wonderful event. The centerpiece of the event will be the unveiling of the monument, which will consist of a bronze plaque designed by SoCal Bronze of Oliver Goodall. Oliver Goodall, as you all know, was a Tuskegee Airmen, but he was also a civil rights leader. He was a participant in the Freeman Field Mutiny. This was a peaceful protest, which he and his other officers during World War II fought for equality by protesting segregation on the armed forces facilities. And they did this by walking, one by one, in pairs, into the officer quarters that were designated to be white officer quarters, slowly walking in there, and despite being reprimanded by their commanding officer, they continued to do this. But this began the movement that eventually led to President Truman in 1949 to fully integrate the armed forces. And so Mr. Goodall was a part of that. And so the plaque, designed by SoCal Bronze, is very special. It's among their clients, they are the ones who designed the plaques for the Rose Bowl, the Ronald Reagan Presidential Library, the Japanese-American Interment Memorial in Merced, and the Riverside Sheriff's Memorial of Canine Officer Sultan, to give you an example of the breadth of clients. So we're very honored that they were able to, you know, provide a lot of support for this project at a great discount. We are honored to be working with them. Next, the also, the Royal Club of Altadena has been such a great support, and shown such great leadership in supporting this project, both monetarily, but also through their leadership with their president, Mark, thank you very much, yes, who, and in fact, you know, there were also, besides the plaque, we're going to also have a little one of those free public library boxes, and in those boxes, people can find out books about the Tuskegee Airmen as well. can find out books about the Tuskegee Airmen as well. So the event's going to be a very fun, exciting event. It's Sunday, February 16th, between 1:00 and 4:00 PM. In addition to the unveiling of the plaque and the free library, the event will also include a variety of family-friendly events, including activities provided by the Side Street Projects, Rhythms of the Village, as well as other activities by the Rotary Club of Altadena. The Blair High School ROTC will be our color guard. And the First AME Church Gospel Choir will also perform at the ceremony. We will also have at least two living Tuskegee Airmen in attendance, Ted Lumpkin and Jerry Hodges, in addition to a display of Tuskegee memorabilia in the house. We will also have Mr. Goodall's grandson, Antoine Goodall, who did live in the house here in Altadena, as well speak at the event. This is truly an event by and of the local community. With support by local Altadena residents forming the full committee, supported through the Altadena Community Chest, the Altadena Community Garden, the Altadena Libraries District, Altadena Heritage, and the Los Angeles Chapter of the Tuskegee Airmen, we have raised $3,470, which is 75% of our goal. We would welcome any additional support, and we are grateful that Outward Bound Adventures has graciously agreed to serve as our fiscal sponsor, making all contributions tax-deductible. There are flyers in the back, but also, details can be found on our website at theolivergoodallproject.com. That's theolivergoodallproject.com. And so, you can learn more about the event, we keep on updating it as we firm things up, but it's going to be a lot of fun. But I want to thank all of you, especially the Altadena Town Council, for being, you know, partners in making this event a reality. Thank you. I'm willing to, I take any questions.
Any questions from the council?
What's the address on Harriet?
It's 679 West Harriet Street.
Thank you.
But it's really that full block, that's where the monument will be held.
And it's at 1:00 PM?
At 1:00 PM. The ceremony, which is when the event begins, but the ceremony itself starts at 2:00.
And then, Councilmember Wong, Councilmember Sektor, if we can post that, if you have a PDF, I think we have a PDF of it, it came through already, that we can post on the website. And I encourage anybody available on that day to attend the local event, and maybe take you up on the offer of hosting a table, so we can do through, which will be nice, we can support any way we can.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
You gave another address, 2116?
679.
679, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I know Councilmember Jones and Councilmember Thomas really wanted to be here. They're both doing the homeless count, so they were very enthusiastic to be here for this, so, thank you. Okay, item 5.2, Reading Partners, with Annalise Cabral. Okay. Did I say it correctly?
Cabral.
Cabral.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Close.
All right, hello everyone, my name is Annalisa Cabral, and I'm a AmeriCorps member. I'm serving as a senior volunteer coordinator with Reading Partners for the Altadena and Pasadena areas. Reading Partners is a nonprofit organization where we recruit volunteers to come into elementary schools and help students that are behind in their reading. Nationwide, only 36% of 4th grade students are actually reading at their grade level, and this number really hasn't changed significantly in the past 15 years. This is really why Reading Partners exists. We are a national organization that operates in 13 states, nine metro areas, and 220 schools across the country, and we are so proud to be part of the Altadena community. Here in the surrounding area, we serve seven schools in the area, including Jackson Elementary. Reading Partners is in need of volunteers to be a tutor and mentor to a student in the local area. We operate between the hours of 9:00 to 5:00, Monday through Thursday, and we ask for just as little as one hour a week, and we can be flexible with any schedules. I've left some cards in the back of the room, if anyone is interested, and now I'm going to pass it on to my colleague Nicole Golden to give you more information.
All right, so as Annalisa said, my name is Nicole Golden. I am a regional site coordinator, so I support six of our 14 schools. As a recent Altadena resident myself, it's been wonderful to immerse myself in the community's education of our children. Each day, I'm at a different site, at a different elementary school specifically, and it's been wonderful to see the positive impact that our program has had at a couple of different schools, or all of our schools essentially. Just this morning, one of our tutors, Paul, came into the Washington Accelerated Reading Center with a really big grin on his face, and I was like, "Paul, what are you smiling about?" And he just met the parent of one of our enrolled students, and he had said that he'd spoken to the mother of one of the children who's enrolled in our program, and she was just thrilled at the progress that her student was making, as well as how she could see his confidence just boosted from having that one-on-one time with his tutor. So this is just one example to show how meaningful every tutor is to every child in our program. And the one-on-one aspect of our program, the one tutor-to-one-student ratio, is an integral part of what makes Reading Partners a unique literacy program. So if you're interested in becoming a meaningful part of our student, of a student's life as a volunteer tutor with us, you can grab one of the pamphlets, as Annalisa mentioned. Otherwise, you can log onto our website, and just Google Reading Partners Los Angeles, and you can find more information there.
Questions from the council?
Any questions? Yeah.
Do we have something we can, on a PDF or something, we can post, to give to Councilmember Wong?
Yeah, I was connecting with Jennifer Lees.
Okay.
Yeah, so I can connect with her.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please consider volunteering. Okay, moving on. The last special presentation, item 5.3, Amigos de la Rios, Claire Robinson. Hi Claire.
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Claire Robinson. Thank you for the opportunity to share some of the work that we're doing. I've been an Altadena resident for about, lucky, 15 years, and our nonprofit is a stone's throw away on the corner of Altadena and Lake. So, we're delighted to share some of the work that we're up to, and there are handouts in the back, if anyone needs one on the piano. And, basically, I effectively wanted to talk about natural infrastructure in our area, and as a nonprofit, we're committed to really looking at public spaces and their sustainability, and multiple benefits, from aesthetic sense of pride, support for habitat, cultural heritage, air quality, water resources management, and soil replenishment, as well as creating a really nurturing environment for mobility, be it as a pedestrian, or someone on a bike, and whatever age you might be. So, I won't go into, this is like a 70-page PowerPoint, but just as a reference, if anyone is interested, we work so hard in our little trench that we don't often get out to share and connect with people. We host Saturday events for volunteer planting at various places around the watershed, and I'll just hold up this one image that kind of looks like a tree. So, our LA basin resembles a tree with the upper watershed constituted by the Santa Monica Mountains, and the Rim of the Valley, and the Angeles, and then the two river systems, the LA River, the San Gabriel River, creeks, washes, and streams that feed it, and then the coastline. So we're trying to teach children from an early age about what is the whole watershed, and where are we in it, and how do we make sure nature flourishes? So, very specifically, we are community-based design folks, and we mentor recent college graduates who want to get their feet wet in very bureaucratic public processes, like improving tree canopy on our major arterials. Altadena is known for having a lot of great tree canopy, and yet, it's not equitably distributed, and there are little pockets that could benefit from enhancement. So we have a current grant from Cal Fire and Forestry, Pasadena Community Foundation, to analyze where all the trees are, and see where we could add a few tree friends for our general benefit. And, in addition to the things that we usually think about for trees, there's a major stormwater initiative called Clean Safe Water, like upside-down umbrella with a raindrop going in. And if we were to really manage our gray infrastructure and turn it a little bit more permeable and natural, we could, when the rains pour down, we could have some stormwater capture and some better pedestrian spaces to boot. So we're also looking at, how do we become part of that movement? The bond we all, whoever voted on, is now coalescing, and we want to make sure we are looking at how to incorporate stormwater management and greening for the co-benefits provides. We had a lot of fun spearheading the design and implementation of the Altadena Triangle Park, which demonstrated how to capture stormwater and integrate cultural history. Wonderful partners, Altadena Heritage, and Rotary, and other folks from the community, many, 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 supported that initiative. And we'd like to use that as yogurt, or DNA, to spread to the sheriff area, and also, this beautiful facility, we could do some additional stormwater capture and drainage and native plant improvements here. Dorothy Wong was talking about that critical issue of making sure our streets are safe, and especially for our younger set. How do we create safe routes to school? We have been working for years on what we call a walking school buses, and we did that further east in Almonte, where there's maybe not enough budget for crossing guards everywhere that they might be needed. So we put together teams of parents and folks who are specialists in walking and talking about nature on the way to school. We need support to get an active transportation grant from the state, similar to what the city of Pasadena was able to do, to support PUSD schools within the Pasadena border. That's coming up in June. So, part of my pitch tonight is just to share what we're doing, and welcome anyone to stop by and participate. And the other part is practical. There are funds available, federal, state, county, that we need to be literate about and make sure that we're bringing in to our Altadena area. So, safe routes to school, we're working on Jackson Elementary as well, so it's very complimentary to some of the committee work that's already going on. And, looking at how we can improve the school campus, there's mental health, academic performance, and physical fitness benefits from going to school in a natural setting, rather than something that looks like a penitentiary, with obvious kind of impact. So it would be, part of that would be creating things that are happy for pedestrians, joyful for pedestrians. So, we're looking at some infiltration planters. So, for example, on Mariposa Street, where it comes into Lake Avenue, we could add strategically some planters and improve the ADA. I know the county is working on America with Disability Act upgrades, because we're a little behind in many of our areas. But tandem with that, we'd like to be doing some planters there. We've already enlarged some of the planters that are like that, strangling the trees, so we've just cut out the concrete and made it a little bit more permeable, and a little bit happier for the trees. But also, we hope, like our peer foothill cities, Sierra Madre, Monrovia, Pasadena, there are some beautiful examples of how you do pedestrian landscapes that really foster a more peaceful and also economically viable setting. So we're looking at that on Mariposa Street, but others as well. And part of that is to have a little sign, like if you've been down to Old Town, there are maps that are about this big, at about your breast height, and it tells you where you are in Pasadena, and what's fun, and what's around. So the other handout that I have is this, our attempt to do an analogous process. So it's a map that says Friendly Altadena, and we had our, at a bunch of community events, what should we put on there? So you'll see a bunch of little blue tabs that indicate how you interface with the forest or civic spaces here. We'd love to have you add missing pieces, and tonight, I think I hear that the, the, I'm sorry, the farmer's market should be on here, and the new monument that we just heard about. So, it's ready to receive additional highlights. And then, we will clamp these signs onto the street poles in certain locations as a pilot. And then finally, what I wanted to share is, because of our privileged position in the foothills, how we articulate a connection to the interface with the forest or the county, for example, Millard Canyon, the Cobb Estate, Eaton Canyon, and a set of signs that we're working on with the Forest Service that improve wayfinding, safety, stewardship information, cultural heritage, the features of the trails, and help us be better stewards as we enter the forest. So that in a nutshell, is what we are working on. We were working for years a little further east, on bringing the Olmsted Bartholomew Plan that was done in 1930, that would have created a really sustainable basin here, with protections of the upper watershed, a trail network that was like the Altadena Crest, that really connected well, and continued along the urban river corridors to the ocean. So you had active transit, habitat corridors, cultural heritage protection, lots of green to help us buffer and provide ecosystem services with all the difficulty we have balancing carbon and other particulate matter. So, if anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Councilmember Marcusson would like to know. So everything I see here, by the way, and I'm extremely sensitive to this, because I live east of Lake, and so, and I get it, okay? About trees and stuff, all the tree things are west of Lake. But we're friendly over here in Altadena, east of Lake as well. You're missing Webster Elementary School, which is part of PUSD. We've got churches and other schools around here. So if you want to get in touch with Sylvia and me.
Perfect, yeah.
We, it looks like we're not friendly over here.
Well, we, we would not want to, we'd not want to prolong that perception.
You know, sign on that side.
That, yeah, that's all we do, yeah. So, I'm just saying that, if you, I mean, if you look at this, Altadena starts here, and goes there.
Yeah.
And there's loads of other stuff.
Great, well, that's why I'm here tonight.
Yeah.
So. We have a, we admittedly focus to the west, because of our nonprofit, but.
So it's Reggie, and me, and Sylvia.
Coffee or tea?
And Jennifer, and Jennifer Lee.
Okay.
So, yeah. We'd be happy to give you input on this, because it's solely lacking, sorely lacking, I should say.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Perfect.
And, and PUSD is, I mean, Webster is part of PUSD.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
It's on Washington, yeah.
Absolutely, I would, we would love to incorporate that.
Okay, great.
And.
Yeah, we just want to, yes.
Any other questions?
I think.
When I'm going through this presentation, one of the things that stands out to me, in particular, and it's something that Councilmember Marcusson actually addressed with the schools, and it's this statement here, under Nature at Schools, and it says, "The children need time outdoors." The American children spend nine minutes on average outdoors. Nine minutes. I remember growing up, I would be, from the time I left school to the time I was called in for dinner, and if you were, if I was on time, if I was lucky to get there for dinner.
Nine hours, right.
Nine minutes a day.
You'd be out there nine hours, though.
Nine.
You would be outside.
I'd be outside for nine hours, yeah. Nine minutes is, you know, if you, if you don't understand something, you're not going to protect it. So it's important for, you know, all of us to teach our children what we grew up with, and expand that nine minutes, and make them understand, you know, about what's precious, so, thank you for.
Webster, don't you have a garden and all kinds of stuff there, too?
Right.
So, yeah, so I, that's why. I had one more quick question. I worked on the project to put up the pole signs that have Altadena on them, that, and so, are you going to coordinate with, like, where those are, and make sure that you're not?
Right, right, that's a very great point, because those have been a great addition, you know, the poles, but also the monuments with the DEDR cedar. So yes, we're trying to ratchet up the pedestrian and the identity.
Yeah, just, we worked really hard to figure out where to put those pole signs. The monument signs were easier to figure out where to put, but.
Right, no, thank you for that point.
Okay, thanks.
You should look at that, and also on the map, if anyone has an idea, like councilperson Veronica Jones was saying, she would like to see one at a certain location because of the traffic flow of people. So we're, you know, we're in the big ears right now. And I guess the final question would be, making sure that we have your support when it's time to write a letter for one of these grants, or make sure that we are, we had our fifth district superintendent, supervisor really supporting the Cal Fire Grant, but we just need to make sure we're not missing deadlines and missing opportunities, because they're so long. And we tried to do the active transit.
And we tried to do the active transit last year, and we did really well, except we didn't have the right amount of county support, the correct quotient of public works support at the correct time. Our bad, but we don't want that to happen again, so.
Webster Elementary in Pasadena. No, okay. Granny, you know I live in Pasadena with that zip code, 91104. It's in my census tract where, I live in Bahadina, remember? It's not really Altadena. It's got a passing address. I lovingly call it Bahadina. So, Webster's is in Altadena.
Altadena, an area that actually starts at Grobeath, which is actually...
It starts south of Washington.
It's not Washington, it's south. It's Grobeath, I think, is the cross street that actually begins, everything north of Grobeath.
Anyway, Sylvia's done with it.
So, if you want to give any feedback on the map, please, either tonight, or you could drop it off at our office. And there's a sign up if you want a tree in your right-of-way. We want a tree up.
I also want to stress is that my daughter and her friends and her club are actually going to start working with Claire and partnering with her. And when I address the kids' aspect, it's not about telling them or showing them, it's about including them and giving them the empowerment. So, it's not just us getting involved or telling all the schools, but how we can get them to actually partake in the conversation. And I think that's important.
I don't know if...
And you're open to it, because I know...
Yeah, I was just going to share, Billy, thank you for bringing that up, that the Triangle Park, which I think has been enjoyed so far and will continue to be enjoyed. It was planted by 200 high school students who came to 10 successive events. So, we really like to incorporate youth and have a lot of exchange during our process. We don't finish a project and then have a professional build it. You know, we're including people in that stewardship.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, Altadena Community Reports, our very own pledge of allegiance. Doug Cauliflow, Chamber of Commerce.
Only, only one announcement, but it's a big one. Our annual, the Chamber's annual awards and installation dinner is a week from Friday evening at the Altadena Town and Country Club, starts at 6:00 PM, cocktails and 7:00 o'clock dinner. And that is where we honor our Citizen of the Year, our own Veronica Jones, who sits on this council, and also our Business of the Year, which is grocery outlet Mario and Michelle Cuarto. So, we are very, very proud of the wonderful honorees. It's a wonderful evening. We also do a live auction where we raise money and, for scholarships for local kids in our community. And the Chamber, the last several years, has awarded $4,000 in scholarships, dependent on the success of that auction. So, we're optimistic that we'll have another successful fundraiser as a part of the evening's festivities. And those of you, it's $85 a head. It's a wonderful dinner. It is a hosted bar during cocktail hour, wine and beer. So, it's a great evening. If you haven't signed up, you can do it online on our website, it's altedinachamber.org. And what have I missed, Billy?
I think that's...
I had a question about, I know you can get a table. Is there a discount to get a table?
No, no.
It's the same?
Same, yeah. The price per person and all, you know, we'll do our best to, if you have a table of 10, we'll work out in a table of 10 or eight or whatever it is.
I was just wondering if enough people were coming from town council that we could get a table, but it's not a discount, there's no discount. I thought there was a discount.
Come on, Diane.
I already bought my ticket. I have my ticket.
And I know with the Chamber, this is not a money-making event. This is a push and a chance for scholarship.
And the Country Club is very generous and gracious. They put on a great event, and it's, it sounds expensive, it is expensive, but it's a very, very good value and a great evening in our community. So, if you haven't considered it, please do. We'd love to have you there.
What is the date again?
Week from Friday, January 31.
And typically, our community leaders, along with our local politicians, will be there. So, if you want a chance to network...
They've all, they have all been invited. I'm not sure what the RSVP status is at this point in time, but they have all been invited, right?
I think the Department of Commerce sent somebody. I know Supervisor Barker's doing something else, so.
Yeah, I don't know what the status is. And typically, we don't know until the very last minute, so.
Yeah.
Okay, no other questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Altadena Library, Nikki Winslow. Welcome. It's a little quieter this month from your first month, last month.
Yeah, it's been two months already. It's crazy. And we have a table at the dinner, so. The library will be representing. So, we are kicking off a new year at the library with a new strategic plan. The Board of Trustees will vote to approve our finalized strategic plan this coming Monday night, which is their in-monthly meeting, January 27th at 5:00 PM. We're really excited about the three strategic priorities we established, which are, we are curious, we are connectors, and we are neighbors. Staff and I have developed an operational plan to support these priorities that will also be in the board packet. So, if you're curious, you can check that out once we post it online. Census 2020. My marketing and community engagement manager, Chloe Cavalier, and I have started putting plans into place for Altadena Library District's support of the Census collection. We've established contact with partnership specialist with the Census Bureau, who will support our efforts, including awareness and resources. We're going to help with a marketing campaign through the library's platforms, a robust featured section of the website on the census, displays at both libraries with census information and resource guides. We're also going to host some events, including a mini job fair for census jobs at the Bob Lucas Branch. I think that's tentatively planned right now for February 23rd, but we'll bring census representatives in to hopefully recruit locals to work for the census. They find that they're a lot more successful collecting if it's their neighbors that knock on their door and help collect census. These efforts may offer many opportunities for collaboration with local entities, and Chloe's in the process of reaching out to potential partners for the events and outreach. Our biggest push will take place during Phase One of the census, which is from like the end of February through March, which is when they're really trying to collect the most. From there, we will continue our support with reminders and ongoing events. If anyone has questions, please feel free to reach out. Architectural and design phase, we had our second round of town hall meetings with the public last Monday at Bob Lucas and Thursday at the main library. Our architectural firm, ARG, will now compile all of these preferred choices of their design work and give us quotes on completing these projects. Thank you to all of the community members and staff for participating in this very important fact gathering process. We anticipate having a fully done conceptual design for the board or schematic basically in March. So, right now, it's just basically putting all the quotes together, so we have a good sense of how much money we're going to have to raise. Biblioteca, so I'm excited to announce that we're getting a new ebook and e-audiobook platform called Cloud Library. For those of you that use our current platform, it's called Libby, offered by Overdrive. We're going to be switching, because we're joining with 29 other library systems in California to share our resources. So, we're going to go from having about 3,800 volumes to over 140,000. So, I would highly encourage everyone to download the app. It's going to launch February 19th, and we'll have access to all of the materials as of February 27th. Cloud Library, one word. So, that's really exciting, because I listen to audiobooks in my car. That's the only time I have to read, you know? We're also joining in a partnership with the Pasadena Federal Credit Union. All members of the Friends of the Altadena Library will be eligible to open up an account with PFCU. So, join the Friends. It's only $10, and then you can enjoy the perks of being a credit union member if you so choose. Our staff has also been given the chance to join as well, so we're in a partnership with them as well. Read Adina, that's our first ever One Community, One Book project, is launching in March. And we're really excited to announce that we chose the book Wild LA, which was written by four authors from the Natural History Museum, who are going to come out and speak and offer different programs and activities in March, April, and May. At our, the February meeting, I'll have more confirmed details about different events and programs. And what we're really hoping to partner with the town council on is challenging all of you to try to set up different reading groups in your census tracts. So, we'll put together reading kits with the book that, you know, basically could hand off to someone, either you could host it in your home or someone in your census tract, because we'd really like to see a growing of reading groups throughout the community. So, more information, I'll have more details basically at the February meeting. It should be really fun. Happening this weekend, on Sunday, January 26th at 3:00 PM, is our first ever Mount Lowe Chamber Players Concert Series. This is a program developed from expressed community interest and sponsored by the Friends of the Library, with early works from Rossini, Mozart, Ives, and more, for strings. So, this first one is a string program. So, again, that's at 3:00 with a reception to follow. And I'll be there, so please come. And then, I attended my very first Second Saturday in January, and it was so much fun. I'm really excited for February, which is going to be on February the 8th. We're going to have Jack Katz, which is a swing band. And I'm excited to announce that we will be debuting a new dance floor that we haven't had before. So, that'll be in time for the swing dancing, which I've heard is really helpful when you're swing dancing. So, I hope to see you there as well. So, that's all I brought, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
We have a lot going on at the library, so.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, Item 7, general public comments.
Now I can see if I can read people's handwriting. Oh gosh, is it Stacey Whitney?
Yes.
Or something close to that?
Something close to that.
Please, please come up and speak.
And let's just remind everybody, if you didn't fill out a comment card and you'd like to, and they're on the piano at the back, you still have time to do so and hand it in to the council.
Look, I have, I have two minutes. All right, then. Your timing? I had lots of notes that I wrote this morning, but we'll try to summarize this. Forgive me, I'm having a little trouble breathing, but first of all, I wanted to thank everyone who has come out in support of the market.
Could you kind of speak this way to us?
Okay.
We can't hear you. That's why I'm saying...
Sorry, okay. I'll start with introduction. My name's Stacey Whitney. I'm the manager of the Altadena Farmer's Market. And I wanted to thank everyone who's come out in support of the market. I see lots of our vendors here, our community members here, and just their efforts over the past few weeks has been truly impactful and lets us know that, that the community does want us here. So, thank you very much for that. So, here's what happened in summary. The Department of Parks and Recreation initially requested that we pay a 10% fee of our gross sales to the Department of Parks and Recreation, which for most of our vendors wasn't feasible. During the slow months in particular, many of them are operating in the red. It's very challenging for many of our vendors to even come to the market during the winter, much less pay an additional fee. So, while some of our vendors were able to, unfortunately, most of them were not able to, and none of our produce vendors, with exception to one, would have been able to attend with this additional fee. So, Silvira Grant and I met several times with the Department of Parks and Recreation to try to come up with some type of modification. And as of today, they did agree to waive that fee, so. So, again, thank you for the community efforts. The county was willing to waive the fee, but the park was saying that there was, basically still telling us that it was a requirement, regardless of what the county had told us. So, after meeting with them today, they did say, okay, because the Altadena Community Garden is your fiscal sponsor, and they're a 501(c)(3), and our permit is actually under the Altadena Community Garden, that this was, that it would also be, that the fee waiver should also fall under the exemption, because we're operating with a fiscal sponsor, being the Altadena Community Garden. So, vendors have a pop-up tomorrow still at Pizza of Venice, and if you could please support, that would be wonderful. And we will be back at the park next Wednesday. So, we would really appreciate your support by attending the market during the winter months. Vendors have a tough time attending, because they're not making any money. And then, everyone says, well, where are all the vendors? Well, where are you? Please come to the market and keep supporting. I see so many residents who have been consistently supporting, and that's appreciated. We also need more volunteers. There are tons of things we need help with, from marketing to helping set up, to passing out flyers, reaching out to local restaurants, try to get them to shop from our producers, to helping with Green Circle. So, there are a number of things that we do consistently need help with, and we appreciate the ongoing support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacey.
Melanie Rothschild? No?
No.
Okay. Granny?
Yeah.
Okay. You have another one, though.
And I need you guys to do something about it. The LA County Sheriff. A white man followed a young black man for no reason. Call the sheriff on him, he was doing nothing wrong. I want to know, I understand there's some kind of repercussions that this white man should be liable for, and I want you guys to find out. The boy did nothing. He was just walking in his own neighborhood. Racism is alive and well in Altadena, and I expect you guys to find out what's going on and what the repercussions are for this white person. It could have, God forbid, been another Zimmerman. Thank God it wasn't. So, I want you guys to do something. I expect answers from all of you next month. Thank you.
Thank you.
We don't, as everyone knows, we don't respond to public comments, but I will ask the sheriff and find out.
Thank you, on how well you pronounce my name on the first try. Not everybody gets it that easy, and the fact that you said it like that, I just want to thank you and acknowledge that. Two minutes, okay. Today, I went to the Board of Supervisors meeting in downtown Kenneth Hall, and I learned about the homeless outreach services teams. And it was very interesting to hear that all of them agreed that that should pass. And basically, what it is, is instead of criminalizing the homeless and pulling a gun out on them, you talk to them first and learn their name and learn who they are and get to know them on a more human empathetic level. And I was talking to the officer who was here in the back from the CHP, saying how CHP has to deal with homeless probably more than our sheriff does, because they're dealing with the streets where people are literally living on the streets. So, I would highly encourage the board to learn about this host service, this homeless outreach service teams. And another thing, if I still have time, please, to talk about the farmer's market and how important it is. You were talking about kids need to be outside for more than nine minutes. Well, you're going to see a lot of kids outside at the farmer's market, enjoying music and culture and food and really getting to know their community partners. And the tutors might want to partner with them as well. I also heard a lot of good things from the RIO's Foundation with the trees. We want to talk about water capture. I live on Palm and Lincoln. I see a lot of water when it rains, a lot of water, so much that they actually have to put up safety barriers in the park and not allow children to pass or play, because there is so much water there. So, that is an area that that particular program might be able to work with on the park and capture that water and use the youth that they have as well. So, thank you very much for your time. Good news on the farmer's market. Good news on the farmers market, and keep fighting the good fight.
Basically, I was just coming up here to also discuss the homeless issue in Altadena, and I guess I didn't realize there was something called a homeless count that was going on this evening, which is so important, or that we have a homeless outreach and what we have to do with it. I will say that I've been so upset about the overall question about this. It's not just a local question, it's not just our cities or our counties. It has to go up to the state level and that we all have to have our, our, we basically, we have to be able to help these people as much as we possibly can. So I think you've all covered it, but I did put my little two cents in, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Are we done with that? Because I would just like to make a little comment. We are, we are through with public comment.
Okay. And Councilmember Simmons?
I just wanted to see if it might be possible for, I don't know if the timing's exactly right, but if it would be possible for us to get somebody from the supervisor's office to come give us a presentation. She recently, the board passed quite a huge project for the homeless in LA County, and I think it would be interesting to have them come talk to us about what those steps are, what their plans are. I don't, they only just passed it, like maybe a couple, three weeks ago or something, but yeah, I think that would be good for us to get hooked into. The executive committee might be able to get ahold of her office.
Well, I think that sounds good. I think most of us will be supportive, so maybe we can talk offline?
Okay, yeah.
And figure out how that's best, whether it be the town hall, fix it in some way or how it's appropriate, even if they want to...
Talking to us about it and have some information, not just come here and go, yeah, we have good intentions. They really are going to do something this time, so from what I understand. They've declared a state emergency in LA County.
Thank you. Okay. We're going down to Item Eight, Census Track Reports. We have one, eight point one, forty-six oh three point oh one. Okay. Eight, eight point two. Okay, I, I will do it, I, I just want to make sure that because there is a thing, the reason why we set the agenda at the beginning, so if you have, can I add a report, please make sure we add it at the beginning so it can be voted into the report, so it makes it official. So eighty point two, eight point two, Councilmember Simmons, is what census tract?
Forty-six oh one.
Forty-six oh one. And then Item eight point three, Councilmember Wilkins, what's? All right. Councilmember Wong.
Thank you very much. So first of all, I, we're going to be discussing a letter perhaps as it related to the farmers market, but thankfully, with the good news, a lot has been resolved, but what it really, as I was looking at things to say, you know, there was so much to say about how positive the space is and the use of Loma Alta Park and the space around the garden and just seeing euphoric children riding, since I'm a mobility gal, riding their little scooters or their bicycles in circles while their family's sitting on the bench. And it's just an amazing space for our community, thinking about our park space and, and you know, hopefully, this was an amazing sign of our community coming together for something that everyone seems to love and gather around community. So as council members, I think this is a great time for us to really look at these spaces, so again, there can be things like volunteerism that we can really do to help out. All of our organizations, our schools, the market, whatever we can do to make a difference is really important, so, and our community members as well. And so I, for one, will work with the census tract, along with my partner in our census tract, to help out the market whenever we can. And also, with the market, we can use it as a place to do outreach. So I know the library goes there to do outreach. We did our Traffic Safety and Mobility event there, and again, seeing things blossom like the Green Circle has become something now that is a community benefit. So I want to thank Stacy for her hard work. And it is definitely tireless, so let, let, make sure Stacy rests so she can get healthy, and whatever we can do as a community, let's do it. So that's that, and yes.
We have an ongoing challenge in Altadena with neighbors, residents that want new stores, new restaurants, farmers markets, and then don't go there. And we struggle to buy locally and do all of that. I think I heard tonight that part of the challenge of the farmers market is the people aren't going. So, you know, somehow that needs to get better for the farmers market for sure, but a lot of our other businesses too. So anyway, I just wanted to mention that, because we say, oh yay, we got a farmers market, and then nobody goes, or, or not that many people go.
I love that, and, but in addition to that, I know, you know, we did have like a movie night or, you know, different ways that we can engage the community to go, hey, we're going to see the movie, and we're doing something that's multi-benefit, or we're going to learn how to do some water capture bioswell building.
I think one of the things, Dorothy, that I think we can work on is how better to get the information out of what's going on there, so that's fine. Okay.
And you're right about the parks, I just want to mention, because they had, we did the movie nights, and the parks supplied that for free to bring people to the park and to the market and other things like that. So that's where we can sort of partner with parks and other, and get them to support. I know the parks have changed administration, so it means we have to maybe get the other administration to come up, fall in line.
Yeah, okay.
Go ahead. Flash.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. I lied.
Oh, it's okay. I just wanted to add, they were talking about markers, farmers market marker, this way.
Oh, yeah? Wayfinding. Okay, so, yeah.
Something like that.
Okay. Sorry.
And then just a short little thing, if anyone is interested, we attended a meeting with LA County Regional Planning, and we're going to have a James Village meeting if anybody is in a James Village home. They are actually spread out all across Altadena, as we've learned, but there's definitely a little pocket that's being considered in Census Tract forty-six oh three oh one, and then it goes over to forty-six oh three oh two. So it would be an exciting time to learn, and what I learned is, you know, as we look at land use, it, sometimes preservation and restoration can be better than total demolition and construction. So how we look at our land is really important right now, and as Diane was talking about, you know, what we're going to do to make housing affordable in our community, all of these things. So if anyone's interested, by the way, we have a volunteer signup sheet for the farmers market back there, and then we'll get something more online, so we can get that going. And then if anyone wants to find out about the James Village meeting, we're starting to organize on Saturday, one twenty-five, and you can email me or contact me if you want to learn more.
Well, there is a James Village cottage that's in my census tract, and they're selling it for one point five million.
Yeah, I know. Yeah.
And I've been over there talking to them. I don't feel like...
It's crazy. Yeah, a lot's changing quickly.
Affordable housing, that's not one of them.
Right. But it could also mean there can be more building in the back, and you don't have to create, you know, one structure that houses maybe three people, and it can be something that's, you know, it's an alternative, and there's some, some good tax incentives if you also take care of your house and you get into the Mills Act, it's called. Anyway, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next Census Track Report, eighty, eight point two. Councilmember Simmons?
Okay, I will be brief. We've been working for the last, well, we started over about a year and a half ago to, to work on getting the Mount Low median cleaned up a little bit, and we're having another community meeting this coming Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, in this room, six thirty to seven thirty. If anybody's interested, it's primarily targeted at the, the local residents, neighbors within a quarter mile or so of the, of the median, but it's, you know, it's certainly a place where a lot of, a lot of other folks in Altadena, you know, go up and walk and walk dogs, and it, it represents the, the base of the trail up to Mount Low as well. So that's this Wednesday, twenty-ninth, six thirty, seven thirty here.
Next Wednesday.
I'm sorry. What? Yeah, next Wednesday, the twenty-ninth. And it'll be, it's primarily County Public Works presenting the, the updated concept plans for the, for the median.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wilkins?
Two things. The first is this Friday, there is Elliot Science Night at Elliot Middle School or Elliot Mag, what's the proper? Elliot Arts Magnet, there's going to be a heck of a lot of science there. We're talking Elliot Magnet Academy. We're talking NASA, we're talking SpaceX, we're talking JPL, we're talking sidewalk astronomers, we're talking stormtroopers. I think there's two hundred organizations, and it's just crazy, so I'll be there. And the second thing is that young man that was trailed and, you know, it was my son, actually, that was trailed by a neighbor and called the sheriff, and so it was, it wasn't my happiest, how, how shall I put this? It didn't seem like beautiful Altadena at the time, if I posted it on the Altadena Facebook group list, but you know, we're making progress as a society, and you know, we go a couple steps forward and a couple steps backwards, but there it is. But don't forget the, looking up to the heavens on Friday, and we can worry about looking the other way. The next meeting.
Councilmember Wong, you have a question?
So if anybody wants this information on the website...
Of the sign tonight?
It's already all over.
Sure, but I can add it. It just, you guys can always back me up too. Thank you.
Okay. Is that it? Okay, Item Nine, adjournment? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, two seconds.
Second, okay. And now, if anybody wishes to, I'm not sure how much help they need, but if they wish to go up to Loma Alta Park, that's where the homeless count is being taken place. I'm going to assume most cars are out on the count right now. We're going to go up, maybe see if there's any help, cleanup and other things like that that we can do. Yeah, signing people back in once they get back. The, the, the older building at the top off of Lincoln, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.